Madam Mayor, I have six o'clock.
All right. It is six o'clock and we are ready for our work session. I am so thankful for our city clerk who keeps me on task. Thank you. Tonight, I have asked Tammy if we could have Mike Fina and Daniel McClure from the Oklahoma Municipal League come. One, because I think oftentimes we need to be reminded ourselves of what our office is. But also, in six months, we're going to have filing for two new offices. Councilman Caccini and myself, our terms will be up, and I'm not sure what his plans are or my plans. But I want people to realize that this is not just a two-meeting-a-month position. That we don't get paid for this. It's all volunteer. And I've had people say, "Well, I pay your salary," and I say, "Well, then you owe me some money." Because I've yet to get any. And so I want people, before they file for office, to know exactly what our responsibilities are, what our powers are. That it's not that we're being Facebook warriors or we're voting for the popular vote. But oftentimes, we have to vote for what's best for this city. And that's a hard decision. And so whenever you run for this office, I think you need to be aware. So I hope people will refer back to tonight when they decide to file for an office. So at this time, I'd like for my good friends, Mike and Daniel, to take over the meeting.
Good. Is this on? Ready to go? All right. Mayor, thank you so much for inviting us. I think this probably stems from the fact that you and the Vice Mayor were at the Mayor's Council, Mayor's Council Summer Conference a few weeks ago. And we did a very similar presentation. So... And you guys are lucky that Daniel was available, because I'm not nearly as good at this as he is. So you got Daniel. He's really the talented one. But see, I get to stand up here and take all the credit for it. So that's a good thing about... And I take pictures, too. No, I will offer my input as we go, but Daniel does this all over the state. And really, the idea is this. Listen, nobody's perfect. Sometimes we even get a little lax in how we govern. And sometimes it's just a good reminder for us to go through some of the ways we should be doing it right. All of our training is based on statutory government or statutory authority. That's how we build our training. Daniel is also an attorney, and he's also our legislative director. So he is buried in the statutes all the time, and that's how he develops his training. So I don't want to spend too much time, because we need to get into it. So why don't we go ahead and get started, Daniel, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I think we have a PowerPoint. They're going to get queued up here. I've also handed out a handout that should be at everyone's station. If anybody here in the audience wants to have some extra copies, I'll leave those with you, Mr. Fina, in case someone likes a copy. So how we go through this, Mike and I both, when we do trainings, kind of have an interesting perspective, having both served on different city councils. Mike, of course, being mayor at Piedmont. I was Vice Mayor in Midwest City. And so we kind of take some of that experience with us and what we get every day at the league, which is always really fun. I've kind of got this thing queued up just for your governance style. If I can get my clicker to work. Do I point over here? Do I point at you? I'm just kidding. Okay.
And can we, like, ask questions?
Yeah. Feel free. Good question. Ask anytime. Please stop me as we go along. Yeah, everyone has a copy of that handout there. The handout that's before you is a copy of the statutory duties of the form of government that you have, which is, of course, the city manager form of government. It has each one of the duties on the page there. We'll go over those in a little bit more detail here in a second. But a little background on that piece of paper. When I was first running for office in Midwest City, I just filed, and the city manager called me. And I've known him my whole life, played ball with his kid growing up. And so I thought he was just being friendly. But really, he had, actually, this was part of his routine. He called every candidate, and he had a copy of essentially of what I provided to you. And we sat down and we went over each one of those things. And he said, "This is what my job is as a city manager, and this is your job as a city council member. And here's how we can get along well and not avoid conflict. And you set policy and directions, and that's how this thing's going to go." I thought that was really helpful. We go on the PowerPoint there? All right. Let's go back to the beginning. Okay, great. Sweet. So a little about the forms of government in Oklahoma. Of course, you guys are council manager. I have it highlighted on our screen here. There are 113 of you. You'll notice that the city town form, I'm sorry, the town form is the most popular with 418. The reason I bring that up, a number of times, you may be at an OML event, talking to your colleagues from across the state, and they may say something like, "Oh, yesterday, I fired an employee. It was a really bad day." And they're sharing that story with you. And then maybe you think you can go fire someone, and your city manager knows. That's doesn't, how this goes in city manager form of government. I actually had a city manager form of government, mayor, tell me one time. He's like, "Yeah, I fired someone because Mayor Brown from Weatherford said I can do that," and my head exploded. So I always make sure I tell that story, that we have very specific duties. They're in the statute, and that's what we're going over today. So on your form of government, we'll start there and go over the specifics and start with the council form of government. I had this flyer that's before you with me at every city council meeting for four years when I was on the city council in Midwest City. Just because I wanted to know if I started to deviate from my duties, I had a reminder in front of me. So I just always note that as well. So of course, the ones that are specifically enumerated, that meaning what was in the statute, are before you. So you can, for example, enact ordinances. I know you guys know how that works. I've seen the news. You guys do that from time to time. And so your ordinances, of course, have to be tied to a municipal purpose. Sometimes across the state, you might see an ordinance from another town or another state that takes on a different purpose besides what we would consider a local government purpose. If that is the case, well, that doesn't fly here in Oklahoma, because we have to pass our local government test. And so that's a whole realm of rabbit holes. We won't go down into that. But I just say that you know that you got your attorney here. Mr. Reinhardt's in the corner. He makes sure he keeps you on track with what that municipal purpose test is, and that's really important. The second thing, of course, is raising revenue. You guys are all used to the sales tax thing, so we won't get too far into that. We do have public safety districts now. That is a new tax option that we passed this year, last year, through the legislature, which allow you to use ad valorem assessments for public safety purposes. If you're interested in that, we can talk about that at a later time. But that's really all you got. You're sticking with sales tax and, of course, your regular bonds and things of that nature. One thing that comes up regularly that I have happen all the time, happened to me two times today, as a matter of fact. I'll get a call from an elected council member or a mayor, and they'll say, "Hey, I want to get more information about this one specific, really specific thing." I'm just going to drop to City Hall and get that from the manager real quick. Or I'm going to go show up and talk to a certain employee, because the statutes say, as you see on your paper here, that you can inquire into the operation of any city department. Which is true, but that power is reserved for you as a board, as a team. You don't hold that power individually, which is, quite frankly, the problem we see the most across the state, is a person tries to show up and talk to someone at City Hall or a staff member. We can't do that. And so I always tell people, if you want to make an inquiry, make it a formal inquiry and follow the process. Run it through the city manager and the attorney. And then if it needs a vote, Mr. Reinhardt will let you know. If it doesn't need a vote, and you've already had a process for that in place, then they can get you that information. But we have to follow the process. And the reason why the process is so important, a few years ago, a city that will remain nameless had people who were not following the process. And they got sued individually in their own capacity. Because while you're shielded for acting in your official capacity as an elected official, you're not shielded when you're acting outside the scope of your duties, which these people are doing. They were showing up at City Hall, making inquiries into departments. They had to hire their own attorney. It got super-duper expensive. Let's not do that, right? So that's why we have this formal process. It's really important that we follow it. And it's really important for Mr. ... Reinhardt's sanity. Just said it a moment ago. All right, next power on our list.
Can I ask you about that real quick? You said, "And then if the city manager and attorney decide that it needs a vote, is that a vote here?"
Yes, good question.
In front of people?
Yes. The only time you can go into executive session is that very specific list in Section 307. And so absent something on that list, you would need to be discussing it here. Of course, you can never vote in executive session. But yeah, good question. If they decide that that's not covered under an existing, previously adopted policy, then you'll have to vote on it here. And that's why it's so important, because they'll know what policies have been adopted. Or they can look and inquire to see if a policy about that specific item has been voted upon. If it hasn't, it'll have to come to the council. Good question. I think you looked at me. You have a question? Yes, sir?
Yeah, so I guess I may come up on how we define inquiries.
Got you. So if I call one of the department heads and say, "Hey, how are we coming on that road repair on Willshire or whatever?" Yeah. Am I crossing over that line? That's a great question. I'm so glad you asked that question. When I was on the city council, I thought I was, I was. I was really good friends with a couple of the department heads, right? We played basketball league together. Like, that was just who we were. So I would be at the basketball game, and I would say the same thing you just said. "Hey, how's that road thing going?" Or "How's recycling project going?" And I never thought about, man, did I put them in a weird spot? Because this is where they earn their living, right? Like, that's how they make their money. And so if you'd asked me at that time, when I was in your seat, I'd probably have a different answer. Now I'm on the city council in McLeod. I've kind of changed my tune. And so now, generally, if I'm going to need to call an employee, I just don't do it. And I know that sometimes it maybe seems like a ridiculous step to take, especially if you know the person, you guys get along well. Because inevitably, what will happen is even if you have a good relationship with that department head, one of your colleagues may not. Or maybe they disagree with what that particular department is doing. And then it sets us up for a weird dynamic where you're talking to them, but maybe they're not, or they're following the inquiry process and you're not. And so our advice at OML is to always follow the process. And typically, we'll talk about this in more detail in a minute. We recommend that you have an inquiry process in place, a formally adopted rule for what that looks like. A lot of cities will adopt that rule and say, "Here's how we do this, X, Y, Z." First, you call the city manager. It's pretty common. If that's not been previously discussed, or you don't have a policy for it, then Mr. Reinhardt steps in, says yes or no on the vote, and we follow the process.
What's our process? Do we have one?
Our process is that any other city employee can speak to any other council?
My apologies. Our process is that any city employee can speak to the council. That's not a problem. But we have advised them that they recommend that they call me.
Got you. Check in and make sure.
Call the city manager.
Yeah, so sometimes you have a process for that, so definitely follow that. But if we start deviating from that, that's where we kind of start getting into some problems. As a personal rule, just me as a person, when I do this now, I don't should ever call department heads anymore. Because I don't want to ever be in that situation like that other town that I mentioned, where something happens in the future and they say, "Oh, so Daniel did X, Y, Z," and then I can't really defend myself. I just don't like that look. Now, you have a process here. By all means, you can follow it. But I just, I err on the side of caution, and that's just a personal preference. You'll need to decide where you err on that side of caution, though. Good question.
But for us, ours is contact the city manager, and she'll get back with us. Which is frustrating at times, because like, I want to talk to Mitch. And so I'm like, I have to call Tammy, and Tammy will call Mitch, and then they'll get back to me. But that's our protocol. Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, whatever it is, stick to it. And then that way, whenever you do get the inevitable lawsuit that every city in the state of Oklahoma has had at some point or the other, you said, "I got the process," and I kept my notes and X, Y, Z, and I'm good to go. Next item on our list, create and change departments. That's a pretty common thing. We'll have those hopefully in our strategic planning sessions, things of that nature. That one's pretty straightforward. Won't spend too much time on that one. The next one gets folks in trouble all the time. Grants pardons and remissions of fines upon the recommendation of the judge. I cannot tell you how many times we get this phone call. This is probably the second most popular phone call we get on a daily basis, where someone gets mad on a speeding ticket or something. They'll call in and say, "Hey, Councilman so-and-so, I'm so mad that cop gave me a ticket for this thing." So again, this power is responsible to the board itself as the entity, as the leading branch of our government here. Does not apply to any one person, of course. Not no one of us could be granting a pardon for a speeding ticket. But sometimes people think that this line does look kind of confusing. So again, that applies to the whole board as a team with a majority vote. Also applying whatever policies we already have in place through our attorney. Yes, sir?
Okay, so if I have a resident who calls me about a speeding ticket, I can talk to these four people, but nobody else?
Well, you're a charter city, so you'll need to follow whatever process you have in place. But I'm just pointing out that you don't have that power individually. I would call Roger, see if he has a policy in place. He may or may not have one. I'll let you defer to that handle at a later time. But my only point by bringing this up is you can't do this as a council individually. There's a process for that. It's locally adopted. You'll need to follow it.
And it has to be based on the recommendation of the judge?
Whatever. They're individually and unique in each community, so Roger will have to expand upon that with you if you do have that. So that's, you'll have to make sure you follow that. But I just, I only bring that up because sometimes councilors try to do it individually. We can't do that. That's never going to, never going to work. The mayor's, well, before I go to the mayor, any questions on the specific enumerated powers of a city council? All right. So we'll talk about mayor next. The mayor is, of course, as you know, mayor, so I'll be just making bukus of bucks for all these duties you have. And I don't know how we're going to spend all that money, but maybe we'll figure it out. No, I'm just kidding. The mayor's in this form of government, our largest ceremonial, running the meeting, shaking the hands, kissing the babies. Don't kiss the babies anymore. We get sued for that now. But you can do strictly the ceremonial functions. A sign-off on ordinances is another policy procedure. That doesn't mean you have a veto power unless your charter specifically has one. Do you have that, Roger? No veto power in this town? No veto power in this town, so you have to sign them as a ceremonial function. She says, "I don't want one." I wouldn't want one either. So that's how that goes. City manager, next. That's where, obviously, administers the government on a day-to-day basis. There are four specific items that I have there that are in the statute. The rest of that is, of course, governed by you all locally. But the four specific things in the statute, the big one that always pops out to me is to prepare the budget that goes through the city manager's office. Of course, you'll have your budget hearings and follow your local process. But it starts through the city manager's office, which makes sense. I mean, she sees the financials on a day-to-day basis, probably knows them backwards and forward. That's how it goes. I have had some cities that want to kind of flip that around and let that be driven by different departments or offices. That's not what the statute says. And so unless your charter specifically allows it, you could not do that. Any questions on kind of broad-brush stuff about the positions?
Can we go back to the mayor? This was kind of a bone of contention during COVID. In our charter, it reads that I can make proclamations. And we did make one. And there were several people who said, "I don't have that power." Can you clarify that for me?
I love that. You just throw me right into the lion's den. I love it. Home run. So you guys are a charter community. You guys have individual and unique powers. I honestly haven't reviewed all your charter provisions, so I can't give you a yea or nay on that. I'd be happy to work without Roger and look back at it, but I didn't read it before I came. I apologize.
Is that how you read our charter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions?
I just thought you knew everything.
I don't have all the charter memorized, but I appreciate the confidence.
Okay.
We'll hop over to meetings next. In December is when all of our meeting notices are due to our city clerk. I am quite confident you're following that process.
Do we have handouts on this?
No, I have these separately. Digitally, I can send them afterwards.
I just thought I'd miss something.
No, I apologize. On the meetings, I have the statutes there. This applies to, of course, our trust that we have as the government and our government itself as the city council. I'll note on there that there's the notice requirement in December when we file all of our dates for the year. There is a process if we need to change those. We'll talk about that in just a minute. And the agenda always comes up as a question given to us. And so how long do we have agendas? State policy is 24 hours. Again, unless you have a more restrictive local rule, 24 hours is the minimum, though. So assuming that you have the 24-hour rule, if you post a week beforehand, which is pretty common, sometimes, or four or five days before, you can add stuff to an agenda if you need to within that window, whatever your window is. After the window closes, you can't add stuff to the agenda. And new business is not our friend. We'll talk about that in just a minute. So we really need to stick to the agenda unless we're going to meet the really, really, really specific requirements in the statute for new business. In regards to the meetings that we have, we'll assume that we have scheduled them in December. We're doing our good notice time for our agenda. They're publicly available. And the next thing that comes up is what do we do about canceling meetings? You'll find out if you are a student of Title 11 of the municipal code. A lot of times, things aren't covered in the statutes. Not everything was thought out. There's no specific statute for making a cancellation. Our recommendation at OML is just to follow the same rules in posting it as you are going to cancel it. And then that gives us a good safe guidance. Now, of course, some things happen. There's a tornado. I had a tornado one time in Midwest City when I was on the council. We just ran out, screamed with our heads. No, we didn't really run out. But we just, we had to just call a special meeting at a later time. But a good policy is just to follow those rules. I have the statutes on this page for you for the special meeting posting requirements. That's also a 24-hour for the agenda. What's different on the special meetings is you have to meet the 48-hour rule for calling the meeting. Get a lot of questions about that. If you think about the notice being, "Hey, we're going to have a meeting. When's it going to be?" Forty-eight hours. That's the notice. The actual agenda is due at the 24-hour mark. So between the 48-hour time and the 24-hour time, you can put things on the agenda, submit those things to get them on there. But again, at the 24-hour mark, agenda is closed unless you have a more restrictive local rule. I also note on this slide that Saturday, Sunday, and state holidays do not count for our notice requirement. You'd be surprised how often that comes up when we post something and then a holiday on a Monday. Sometimes those change. So always at the very end of the year, I'm sure your clerk's doing this, but you go and check the state list to make sure that they didn't change or add holidays, which has happened occasionally from time to time. And then those will bite you if you didn't actually have them. So this is our, the crux of our slides conversation today. It's our meetings and council rules page. So the statutes in Title 11 allow us to make local rules. You've heard me mention local rules several times tonight. My general thought on local rules, while not being required, is that I think you should have local rules to avoid conflict. And so everyone feels like they're having access to our democratic system and things of that nature. I also recommend having rules conversations after every election cycle is a good time to have them, because you'll have new people on the board potentially. Or it's a time that we're kind of having a natural reset with new terms starting over, so you can have a conversation of what that looks like. Some things you might put on your rules conversation would be, how do we get stuff to the clerk? And in what timeframe do we need to get to the clerk to be placed on the agenda? In Midwest City, we had a 10-day rule. I'm on a small-town council, like I said, in McLeod now. We only have like a four-day rule in McLeod. So much smaller agenda, though, in McLeod, right? Midwest City's a huge agenda, probably like your councils here. So again, having a notice rule is very helpful. Also helps protect our clerk from conflict with council members if we have a formally adopted rule. So if you, again, if you have one, that's great. If you don't, I definitely recommend just revising it from time to time to see what we want to do. We also have rules for how we place items on the agenda. There's no statute on placing items on the agenda, so that's only governed by local rule. We get that call all the time as well. And our position at OML is that you are elected officials. You serve in an official capacity. I think it makes sense to have access to the agenda, but it's not unreasonable to have a process for obtaining that access. Now, with that said, my first two years on my city council, I didn't pass a thing. I didn't even pass a resolution. They didn't like me so much. But that's okay. They don't have to vote for you, right? We take votes. Sometimes you get green lights. Sometimes you get red lights. I did pass things my third year, so that was good. But that process is important. However the votes fall, that's outside of OML's purview. As long as we're following the process, we're really happy with that. Another thing that we oftentimes suggest in having conversations is about is our ethics policy and how we're going to govern ourselves. Right before I left, in Midwest City, we adopted an ethics policy for what our executive sessions looked like and how we were going to handle those. And most importantly, what the consequence was for not following the rules. You know, district attorneys are busy. They, I've served in a district attorney's office, are very busy, handling very serious and complex matters. And sometimes, a violation of a notice rule is really not on their agenda for prosecution, right? Let's just be honest, right? But it's really important to us. We're the ones having to enforce this locally. And so having those in our rule conversations, I think, is also really important. That way, if someone does something that we think is outside of the rules, we've already adopted the rule. We already know what our expectations are, and we're avoiding conflict between each other later on for having a disagreement on what the rules should be. So again, that's not in the statute. It's in the statute that you can make the rule, but there is no enforcement in the statute. So if you want to have one, that would be locally. I can get you some samples. There's a couple of different handbooks out there that we reference and can send people to as well. But having that conversation, I think, is really helpful. Let's see here. Did I leave anything off of this slide? Any questions about council rules or procedures or protocols? Questions on those? Oh. I think these meetings are streamed live, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so sometimes we have conversations about how we're going to speak at the meetings and how our debate goes. If you're not having problems with that, that's great. This would be a great time to make that rule if you're not. And so I always find it's easier when we're not having conflict to make the rules. But again, debate, the order that we're taking up items is what we also put in those rules. And so, you know, if you think about the legislature, where Mike and I spend a lot of time, they have a very formal rules process when they consider the item, when they're going to vote on the item, debating on the item. There's time limits in there. I'm not saying that you have to be that formal. But I think it's good to have a process so we all know when the appropriate time to debate is. I was visiting a city council meeting one time, and the person, one of the council members, wanted to debate. And they took a vote, and they were done. And the person was like, "Well, I want to debate. I didn't know when we were going to debate." And that's the thing we're trying to avoid, is we know what we're all expecting to do. So I have those conversations as well. And since this is online, and a lot of us are talking about the social media rules and what that looks like, there was actually a Supreme Court case out of Norman about two years ago about social media policies and how that public access to those websites impacts us as elected officials. The decision was that the social media is an open record. It's discoverable. The public can do an open meetings request to your social media so long as it's discussing public business. That one really was, I mean, I was kind of worried about that when I was first getting into city council, because you guys probably all have the same problem. Someone shoots you a Facebook message, "Hey, mayor, the pothole's not looking good on Third Street." "Hey, thanks, Susie, for making a public record. Appreciate it." It's awesome. And I got to keep that and talk to the city attorney in the clerk's office and have a process for that. But you do have to have a process for that. And so definitely, I would discuss those at your rule meetings as well. Those are really important.
So what do you do about that? Because I get that all the time.
Well, it isn't, it isn't. It's an open record, because it discusses public business. The definition of an open record in the open meetings, I'm sorry, in the open records statute says, any document, it can be electronic document or paper document that relates to public business. Text messages count. We had one community where we had people who were texting back and forth from the horseshoe. And it's pretty evident, right? Because it's like, text, send, Joe looks up, okay, Joe texts back. Everybody out here knows that's happening right now. And everyone's just going to put in open records requests and get a copy of it. And if you're breaking it, intentionally breaking the Open Meetings Act, of course, that's a criminal act. We'd never want that to happen. So again, another thing that we should put in our open records policies. Some communities will have an official Facebook page, and we direct all inquiries to that Facebook page. And then the city government can work through that. Some elected officials, just for political purposes, want to have their own Facebook page, and that's totally fine, too. But you need to have a process where you're working through these things and keeping copies. I think the most common thing that I would say that we're seeing now is you have your personal page, and then you have your public page, and you direct everyone to your public page for your public business. And that way, whenever that needs to get discovered or our open records request, we can just work through the clerk's office. And that's easy. We don't want people necessarily going through and seeing grandma's birthday invitations and what we're going to do for dinner. That's kind of a weird situation to be in. So that's the most common thing.
That's what I was going to ask you. Does that open your entire text record to discovery or only specific conversations?
So only the things that deal with public records. So it'd have to be a public record under the definition of the Open Records Act, which is any document, digital or physical, that relates to public business. That's essentially the scrapped-down definition. So if we're talking about an event, about City Hall, we're getting really close to being public business. If we're talking about the road construction on First, we're definitely talking about public business, right?
We need that we send to each other.
You back and forth to each other is definitely, that's the public business. Unless you're inviting them to, you know, the NASCAR race on Sunday, which you guys can come to my house anytime for that.
Okay.
Other than that, it's going to be open record. Questions about rules? All right, I've got a few more slides here. We'll work through here. I have a quote on the screen here. I believe this is a court of appeals case. It says that agendas should be worded in plain language directly stating the purpose of the meeting. We've had some Supreme Court cases. Of course, recently, the city of Norman was involved in a Supreme Court case about their wording of their agenda. If you didn't see that case, I would definitely read it and know what it says. I can get you a copy of it if you would like. But that Supreme Court case dealt with how the city government worked with amending their budget during the budget formation process. And of course, we can't think through every possible scenario, right? But the court said, "Well, you have to give good notice of what you're going to do. If there's going to be potential changes, the agenda should say that." If the agenda says, "Action on adopting the 2021 budget," what are we going to do? Well, we're adopting it, or by inverse, we're not adopting it. But the court in that instance said, well, you guys amended it and you didn't put possible amendments. And then maybe the public would have shown up if it was going to be an amendment. So they want you to be super duper clear. Also with that said, I travel around, see a lot of city council agendas that say things like, "Action item on resolution number seven." Period. That's all it say. What the heck is resolution number seven? Is it deal with dog pounds or fireworks? Like what are we doing here, guys? And so on those, we have to be really clear as well in, in compliance with that rule established by the court of appeals. So plain language directly stating the purpose of the meeting. Those will get us in trouble from time to time. Now, uh, my recommendation on what you should do, if you find yourself in a situation where, oh crud, probably wasn't as clear as it should have been. Uh, we had those a couple, one a couple of weeks ago at my council, we actually inverted the address. It was like 123 Main Street. We put 321. That's fatal because that's, it's not the correct address and people may not care about 321 Main Street, but they may care about 123 Main Street. And so, um, our recommendation is if you get to that, generally consider that a fatal flaw and just not to take action on it. Just move to the next item. If it's super important, maybe you can do a special meeting in 48 hours. If it's an emergency, well, that, if it meets the emergency statute, by all means, we can call an emergency meeting. But, uh, generally I would not take action on it because the repercussion is like what happened in Norman where they go through the whole court process. They're spending tons of money in legal fees and then you lose, have to do the whole meeting over again anyways. Might as well just do it over one time and be done in 48 hours. Uh, there, any thoughts about the, those types of procedure questions? All right. Either I'm boring you or super clear. Uh, let's talk about public comment time. Do you guys have public comment time here in Yukon? What's your, uh, procedure, Mayor?
They, you know, put a notice in with the clerk. We give them three minutes and then we have no discussion back.
Okay. And that's because it's, it's not an agenda item yet, right? Okay. That's the pretty, pretty much the standard procedure across the state at this time. I don't know about you, council members, but when I was on the council, I really didn't like it. It felt, it feels really weird for someone to like, you know, "This is a huge issue on Fourth Street and I need you to help me." And then you say, "I'm really sorry. I, I can't take up that point with you right now." So I developed a good strategy. I totally like blaming the legislature and I always say, I'd really love to talk with you about that, but unfortunately legislature says I cannot. So we'll talk to you and we'll follow up with you on that.
And that's what I tell them when they come up is I want to let you know ahead of time, we can't comment.
Yeah, that's a super helpful line.
It feels very, very awkward.
It feels so awkward. And, but by making that announcement at the beginning like you're doing, that's fantastic. Won't belabor that point. But I think that's a super, super thoughtful thing to do.
Blaming it on somebody else.
I, I like blaming those guys, but don't tell them I said that though. So, I'm just kidding. Stay on target. Uh, this is my dad's favorite thing when he's talking to me. He says, "Son, I need you to stay on target." So I use my Star Wars meme. But, um, how many times, and hopefully you haven't had this experience, but I have had this experience where your, your city council meeting may start out about a carport or something like that. And then the next thing you know, you're asking, "What kind of car you park in at that carport?" A Dodge Ram? I love Dodge Rams. Speaking of Rams, my kid's showing at the FFA fair this year. Do you ever go to the FFA fair? It's a great time. I love sheep. What were we talking about again? I know that's really dramatic, but you're laughing probably because you know that happens sometimes. And so, um, we had kind of a procedure at a couple of councils I've been on where we get kind of the friendly reminder from each other. Uh, and then after the friendly reminder, uh, the Roger Reinhardts of the world bring the hammer. That was kind of how our, our council worked. However, you set your rules up, just make sure you have a process for that. And the reason for that is my next slide, oh, not that slide. I'll come back to that slide. This is my next slide, which I put loose lips sink ships and also cause lawsuits. And the reason why it's important to stay on target is sometimes we deviate and that gets us in trouble. So the example I always use is another city that will remain nameless, but they had a really fun fact pattern where they were talking about the development of houses in the community and they were wondering what that community should look like. And they talked about a certain size of house. And that size of house conversation turned into a certain group of people. And I think the group of people conversation was really talking about people who are buying houses with this low quality material and we thought that was going to degrade quickly. But it didn't sound that way. It sounded really like maybe against certain populations of the society, like for socioeconomic reasons or racist reasons or age reasons. And of course, the plaintiff's lawyers tried all three of those and won about two and a half million dollars on it. When we weren't really talking about that, but we just got slightly off track. And so it's really important that we stay on track. And I always say most importantly, we hold each other accountable for staying on track. I can't just imagine if I was in that council or someone was on that council and they'd said, "Hey man, like we're getting a little off track. Let's get back to this." And then we could have used that two million dollars to build new roads or parks or something, but we didn't. We played out plaintiff's lawyers who got really rich off the deal. And so, uh, really important, again, having that process and knowing how you are going to respond to each other when you feel like you're getting off track. Not in a mean way, but it just, it's important that we're all a team. And while we may have different policy objectives, as a team, we all, I think, agree, we don't want to pay, paying out lawsuits with our limited tax revenue. So that's really important. Uh, coming back to my, well, any questions about the, uh, rules on discussing items with each other? All right. So conflict of interest is our next slide. Um, this is super common. I mean, we live, we all live in the same community, right? Like we have businesses here. We live here. This isn't our full-time jobs and last I checked, our spouses and significant others still want us to have food at the house, right? So we have to have a job. And so it's, it's, it's common that we might run into a certain type of conflict. There are two types of conflicts. There are the impermissible conflicts that cannot exist no matter what, never, ever, never, right? And then you have the conflicts that look like conflicts, but they don't fall underneath the impermissible conflict section. So of course you can't do direct dealing, right? We all know we can't do direct dealing. We can't do business with the city, right? That's not going to fly. Things that may get close to a conflict are the things that really concern Mike and I the most. Because regardless of whether something is an actual bona fide illegitimate conflict that can't happen and the public's perception of a perceived conflict, that impacts you all politically the same, right? We don't care if it's, oh, it's totally legal, but it just looks really, really bad. That public doesn't care about that. They care about how it looks really, really bad. And so again, a process, how to handle these conflicts of interest. Uh, a good practice from an old timer, uh, city council member that I knew and was really fond of. He had a rule that if it even looked remotely close to a conflict of interest, he would come sit out here. Now again, if it's an impermissible conflict, it can never happen. Roger's going to make sure that that never happens. I'm talking about the ones that look bad or maybe could look bad. So if the, on those particular types of conflicts of interest, uh, his advice, which I have stolen, I think it's good advice, is to come sit back here or go out in the hallway. Uh, I have been to council meetings where people say, "Well, I, my cousin Joey's been on my second, third cousin's side. He kind of has kind of some skin in this game, so I'm going to sit this one out." But I'd really love it if you all voted yes. That is not sitting it out, right? Like you just, you just played, played, helped, played ball for cousin Joey here. So again, we're not going to engage in debate if we have a perceived conflict. Best to sit it out and the clerk will then note, uh, you know, so-and-so stepped out of the meeting at this time. The item was discussed for this many minutes. Councilman so-and-so returned to the meeting after the vote occurred and did not participate. And that really good record protects us later on in the future. You say, "No, it's not an impermissible conflict. We didn't violate the law and I was in the audience or I was outside the whole time." Having that good record will protect you guys as a team from those kinds of issues popping up. All right. Another thing that comes up pretty common is, do we have to vote tonight? Correct answer is no, unless it's an emergency. So maybe my, my favorite lawyer answer. But generally, if it's not an emergency and it's something that you want more information on, that's okay. We can move it to next meeting. We can call a special session on it. We don't have to vote necessarily. I talked to so many councils that feel like it's on the agenda. We have to, we have to do this. Don't feel that pressure. I'd rather you get it right one time than revisit it five times. And I think, uh, I, I know, I for one have been on councils that revisited something five times and that's just not desirable, right? So just get it right the first time. We can schedule it off in the future. Absent an emergency, of course, which would be different. But generally you don't have to vote tonight. There's no rule. Uh, there's also no rule that we have to go in the exact order of the agenda. And so just because it's in the order, you don't have to follow the order. The most painstaking example I can ever give you was on a night like tonight where I'm doing a presentation. So I did an hour presentation like this with a council and the room was packed. And I'm like, they just really want to see me talk. Turns out that wasn't why they were there. They had the agenda item numbered like 40 or something, the very bottom of the list. And council goes through 39 items first or however many they had. When they could have just skipped to 40, those people don't care about whatever other stuff we're talking about. So just, yeah, if you have people here and they're wanting to, to talk to something, by all means, you can skip around and facilitate other people's schedules. Generally I find if they're unhappy and they want to talk about agenda item 14, if you take up 14 first, probably going to be a little bit happier. They're having to sit through 14 items they don't want to hear about. Now they're really perturbed because they had to be here all night. So again, I just mentioned that to you. Go in whatever order you want. However, it's best ran by, by the mayor or the council can ask. I've typically done that. When I have to leave early for a meeting or something, I'll say, "Hey, I got four agenda items. Can we do those first? Great, no problem." So again, no rule on that. You guys can put that in your local rule if you want, or the mayor can just take that through the, your leadership position as the mayor and do whatever you seem, uh, to be appropriate. My final disclaimer before I kick it over to Mike and then I'll come back after Mike's comments is you have to talk to your city attorney. He knows your local rules, your local policy, your, uh, charter rules. Nothing is more disfavored than calling OML and, and telling me two facts out of 10 and then seeing my name in the newspaper on Monday. And Daniel McClure from OML said this. "That's not what I said. You gave me two out of 10 important facts, right?" And I'm totally happy to help you through those two facts you give me, but I'm going to be honest with you, if there's 10 more, I, I don't know. That's not going to help you and it's not going to help me. So, um, we're always helpful at the league. We have an inquiry service that if you want to call us, we'd be happy to get you information. Look up statutes for you. Oftentimes I'll have sample ordinances from other communities. Totally happy to help you with any of that. But always, whatever I give you, circle back to Roger and he might throw it all in the trash can or have a different perspective. And the only opinion that matters is Roger's, not mine. So make sure you check with him. I always like checking. I always put this on there. Check before the meeting. As an attorney, nothing drives me crazier than being at a, a meeting and someone on your board looking at you and go, "Hey, what's the rule on that?" "Oh, well by all means, I've memorized all thousand pages of every law book and I can tell you everything. Ain't that right Roger?" So if you, if you call ahead of time, you can do the lawyer a favor and do yourself a favor by getting the right answer when you need it. Uh, I oftentimes will just hop onto my email. I'll shoot my attorney an email, you know, week beforehand. "Hey, I'm going to ask you this question at the council meeting. Here's a heads up for it." He appreciates it. He's ready to go and we're not putting the attorney in a kind of a weird spot. So, uh, definitely do that. Roger didn't even pay me for that plug. There was no charge on that. So Q and A time. I think Mike might have some comments as well and we'll do Q and A and I'll come back up for a few more.
Just a couple. Um, one, two, and I'm right. He's fantastic. He's very good at this. Couple of practical things. Um, councilman, you, you were talking about if you, you talk to the city employees. When I was mayor, Piedmont was on the council first and then I was elected mayor the next year. So it was a pretty quick, pretty quick turnaround. Turns out that most of the people on our public works were people I went to high school with. So they felt very comfortable with calling me, felt very comfortable with stopping me at the diner. Always, you know, sometimes it was talking about high school stuff until one time, one of them cornered me about a raise and put me in a really bad position about that he thought everybody in public works needed to, to have a raise and that the mayor should do something about it. And it was after that, that I really changed my ten and I, I learned that my city manager wa, was my firewall. And so if I could just keep everything municipal wise, I didn't mind talking about the football game with him, with, with those guys. But if I kept everything in front of the city manager, I was protected and it also gave me an out. Hey, that's, that's Tammy's shop, you know? So, um, for your own protection, you can't avoid it. You cannot avoid it a hundred percent. They're going to corner you somewhere, the grocery store or something. Uh, but I would practice that pushing it to Tammy. It just, you're going to, you just get yourself in bad situations. So, um, did you guys hear something that you didn't know tonight?
Yes.
Don't feel bad about that. Don't feel bad about that at all. This is actually complicated governing. This is a heck of a lot harder than what they do at the Capitol. I promise you. This is full contact governing, what we do in municipal government. And there's so many rules that we have to keep up with. I worked at the legislature for five years before I was elected. And when I got elected and Daniel will probably tell you the same kind of story, I knew everything. I was the smartest guy in the room. Yeah, I knew everything. You don't have to tell me anything. I'm going to sit down and go to work because I, I worked at the legislature. I'm smart. I learned very quickly. I had a, had a very eye-opening moment. The, I was on the council and the city manager calls me and he says, "We got a real problem." So our sewer lagoons are about to go, uh, into, what does the EQ do? Cam, I mean, they consent, consent order. We, we're going to have to spend $4 million to fix our lagoons. What? I was like, okay, spend the $4 million. He goes, uh, Mayor, or our councilman, our total budget's only $5 million. How are we going to pay for it? Well, I meant the legislature where we dealt with a hundred million, a billion, and I thought, oh, four million is no big deal. And then the reality of municipal government hits you in the face. How are we ever going to come up with $4 million when we have to? Cause we're about to lose our sewer lagoons. It's tough governing here. So, so don't feel bad if you heard new things tonight. We all make mistakes. There's a lot of forgiveness in what we do. We can go back and correct things. Don't break the law, right Roger? Don't break the law, but if we mess up an agenda item. I had to go back and vote on things more than once because we messed it up the first time. It's okay. Self-correct. Catch, catch yourself. That's all okay. But just make sure that you're following these rules and you have so many resources. You have so many resources here at the city. You have the municipal league. Daniel mentioned our, our inquiry department. We get hundreds of those calls a month from council members saying, "Hey, how do I do this? What's the procedure here?" And, and we just go to the statute and then the last thing we say is, "And then check with your city attorney." So when in doubt, call Roger out. This is, this is, this is the other backstop right here. Uh, you have a lot of protection with your city attorney. So if you kind of follow those two things, I can guarantee you, you're going to stay in line and you're not going to get yourself in trouble. Listen to your city manager, listen to your city attorney. You guys are fortunate here in Yukon. You guys have a fantastic city. You have a fantastic government. Uh, I, if you were at the mayor's prayer breakfast where I spoke, I just gushed about Yukon. But I know firsthand, I, I grew up here, like I grew up in Piedmont, that's where I went to church, where I go with Rick. So I've seen it over the years and it's better than it's ever been. So we're doing some really great stuff here. Uh, and I've had the, had the chance to, to work with Tammy and I just know you have things working in the right direction. So that's not the case at the other 585 municipalities in the state. Uh, we have a lot of great municipalities, but Daniel and I deal with a lot of problems from day to day. You don't have that. So really all you have to worry about is getting it right here and just keeping the ship going. I think I said that to you when you got hired. Said, "Hey, just steer the ship and you're, you're going to be successful." So, uh, let me give you some practical things from when I was mayor that was very helpful for me. And then we're going to, we'll let Daniel finish up with, we'll, but do some Q and A. I learned quickly, the budget's the most important thing that we do in municipal government. And it's probably, uh, that, that's really why you're elected, is to manage these folks' tax dollars. That's why, why you're up there. So my, I learned that my first year as mayor, when the city manager brought me a budget and I started looking and I realized I'm not as familiar with this city as I need to be. So at that moment, I learned the budget. And then in a council meeting one time, a council member who was not the brightest council member that I served with, so I won't say that person's name, would always say, "In our charter it says..." I was like, you know, I read that charter. Don't think that's exactly what it said, but he would do it all the time. And like he was bluffing us in poker. So I went and I studied my charter. And then when he would say, I'm like, no, let me read that to you. Uh, and then we had council rules, like Daniel said. So what I did when I was mayor is I got a three-ring binder. I put a copy of the budget. I put a copy of the charter. I put a copy of the council rules. I even had the statutory references, although I didn't have to use it. And then I had a little pocket constitution in the, in the pocket of my three-ring binder. Never once looked at the constitution, but it looked cool there, like I really knew what the heck I was doing. So I had that in there just for posterity. But your budget, your charter, if you have rules, have your, those are, that's your rulebook. That's what guides you through this. And if you come up to a question in the council meeting, then you have it right there. That made me such a better council member and mayor because I just had it at my fingertips. But learn your budget. Take some time every year. Get intimate. Love that budget. Cause it's really the most important thing you guys do and you'll know the city better. If you learn the budget, you'll know how the city works better. Is that right Tammy?
That's right.
So, okay. Uh, I don't want to take up too much more time because we want to hear from you guys. So why don't you start off the Q and A, Daniel?
Yeah. Any specific questions we need to talk on about in more detail?
I have a, an agenda question. Does a item that's on the agenda proposed for action have to be read aloud in the meeting? And, and the reason I ask actually specifically is about this time last year, we had an item that had at least a full page of legal description of a property. And it's like, I, I wonder if we actually have to read all that out loud.
So that is governed by local rule. I'll say that number one. So you may have a local rule. Number two, as a matter of good policy, it, it is helpful to read them. Sometimes on council, when you're dealing with really specific stuff, it's helpful and it's helpful since we're recording it, we can make sure we get it. Now that cuts both ways because if you screw it up, then you could maybe insert some confusion you don't want to do. So oftentimes when you're doing the really confusing stuff, you maybe have the staff read it if it's appropriate. We always read them at our planning and board of adjustments meetings because we're dealing with specifically with property and a specific property. But there's no state statutes governed by your local rules and you guys can address those as you see fit. But, uh, generally mo, most folks will, will read them. Um, but again, local policy. Good question. Other thoughts or questions?
I know. There are times when I don't want to read all that.
You're like, man, that's going to be a long night. I, I will add to, to Mike's point about good government. Um, we talked about the rules and the rules of procedure and things like that. That's a lot to do, especially if you don't have them all done right now. So don't feel overwhelmed by it. But as a government over time, you know, I, I have some communities that we work with where they've had some continuity in leadership or the same attorney for 20 years. And they've gotten this whole, this, all of this done, that there's no conflict because everything's kind of been planned out. So over time, if you guys add a little bit a, a, as you go, and maybe if you said, maybe you guys run again, maybe you don't. The next people, if we keep that, that concept going, we can make sure we're following it. And, uh, at some point we'll arrive at the destination that we felt were really good with our rules. We have a few more minutes left, so I won't go over everything. Couple more slides left, but if we can't switch to them, that's okay. I'll just read from here. Uh, we do a community building training. That was the next thing in our slide book. We didn't have enough time for that, so we'll do that one another day. But our last thing that I'll mention is Mike mentioned the services that we have at OML. Um, we have a training every month about different topic. If you're not on that list, let us know. We'll get that to you every month. We're transitioning to have them online and in person. So we've been doing the online all through COVID. We're going to keep doing that. So if you're on that list, get on the list. Uh, if you're not on our legislative advocacy list, also let me know. I'll get you on that list. We send out grips throughout the legislative session about this huge emergency of a bill that's going to be heard tomorrow at 11:00. Please call your representatives. And when you all do that, it is gold. It is so helpful for us for advancing good policy. So again, get on that list. And the last thing I'll mention is we have a certified municipal officials program. It's, uh, I, I think you're, you're one of, all right?
Yes, I did complete that.
At the conference, getting her award. So it, it, we log your time that you're, you're serving in trainings like this. This would count if you're, if you're on one. And then you get that award. It just, it shows that you're committed to your position. So always plug that as well if you're interested. But if there's no more questions, that's all we had.
Mayor, I will offer, we're about 10 minutes from the hour. Would you like an ARPA update since I'm there?
Yes, I would love that. Everybody else okay with that?
I, I, I think I can do it in five minutes. I brought it just in case. Okay. So everyone's familiar with the American Rescue Plan and the fact that you will have money coming into Yukon over, I'm sure. Tammy, do you know what your amount yet is? Have you guys?
4.5 million.
Okay. Um, it'll be very close to that. They've, they've been fluctuating a little bit as we start doing the calculations, but that'll be very close to, to what it is. So let me tell you what's happening right now, why you don't have So let me tell you what's happening right now, why you don't have your funds just yet. The, the way the law is written is that the, the state has to request their funding from the federal government. Our funding is not the state funding. They are two separate pots of money. But they're tied together in the fact that we don't get ours until they request that. There is no danger whatsoever of the state not requesting those funds, so don't think that that's part of it. They actually were doing something kind of smart when they, when they waited. We, we, what the state did is they've hired a professional management organization to come in and manage the state part of it. So it's this big nationwide firm. They haven't announced it yet. I was, I was honored that I got to sit on the selection committee for, for that with the, with the legislature, the governor's office. So I got to see firsthand what we're about to get, and it's actually pretty fantastic. They're going to help manage all of the state's programs, all the auditing of the funds, and then specifically, they're going to provide some resources here to us at the municipal level because this money is different than CARES Act. I'm, I'm giving you this warning right now. CARES Act, if they come back and audit CARES Act, it's on the state. If they come back and audit ARPA, it's on the municipality because we bypassed the state this time. That is still, even though the money's coming through them, it's just a pass-through, it's a direct appropriation. You guys are going to be certifying yourself all of your expenditures, okay? Don't panic about that. We're going to give you lots of guidance on that, and we're not anywhere close to that just yet. So let's keep talking about the funding. So what's going to happen is the state, as, as soon as they announce this PMO that they've, they've already, they're contracting with right now, I anticipate this week we'll probably be able to announce that publicly.